Be in accordance with your will, and I ask that you grant these board members wisdom and knowledge and understanding and all of their actions. And God, we're so grateful for the teachers, the staff, the students, the parents and the community in which we live that we're so supportive of these students and their endeavors. And God, I ask that you bless us with continued success in our efforts. And we're grateful for the sacrifice of your son, Jesus Christ. And we're so indebted to you, and we love you so much. In his Christ's name, I pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Next, we'll have the pledges, and we have the Godly Middle School Student Council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas flag. I pledge, under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into recognition, and we have Mr. Flood with the Godly High School volleyball team and Godly High School cross-country team.
Yeah, so always excited to honor what our kids do. This fall, we had a successful fall as well. Had our entire girls cross-country team make it to state. So really proud of them and excited for the work they did. And with all these students, the hard work they put in, there are adults that are spending time with them, and appreciate the coaches for all the work they do and the time they spend up here as much with these girls and getting them safely to and from. So without further ado, I will let Coach McFarland come up and talk about the cross-country team.
I've never spoken to this little microphone. I usually have one in my hand. I think I will pick it up. Well, I appreciate the chance to come talk about these girls. If you don't know me, I could do that for a long, long time. It really is a pride and joy mine, and finding somebody that is willing to talk about cross-country is hard to do. Most people don't really want to do that for very long, but I could talk about these girls for a long time. And it's a little different because normally, since 2011, we would have already had our athletic banquet, and we've kind of changed how we're doing that. And so I haven't even had a chance to give out awards or talk about these girls individually. And so I'll certainly find a happy medium. So I don't want to talk too long and try to save the individual stuff for our sports banquet. But just real quick, I do want to thank our parents that were able to be here. It really is the reason why these girls are successful. There's no question without the parents that you can't do this. And in fact, if I'm going to put a young girl on my varsity team, I usually meet with the parents to make sure they're going to be willing to do everything that they have to do. And they're the ones that make this happen. They make these girls get up. They drive them back and forth. They make sure they go to bed at a decent hour. And you go down this list of young ladies, and every one of them have somebody at home, you know, who's pushing all the buttons and making this happen. So I appreciate the parents. Ms. Swam is back here. If you don't know, I work at Link's. Ms. Swam is our principal. She comes from a completely different background from me, but she supports this team in hiding. Nobody probably even knows she's there, but if you ever see her desk, it's stacked with busy work, and there's a track and cross-country schedule right there on the wall. And so she supports us. And then obviously, Mr. Flood in the admin. You know, there's not a person in this district that doesn't want these girls to be successful. And so that's another reason why we are. Just real quick, I'm not going to go real into detail, but just as a team, and I want to do this just so you can kind of respect the commitment that these girls put out. They had 29 workouts before the first day of school in the summer, and the attendance was excellent. They go 13 weeks, starting in August at 6:00 a.m. They went to two organized timed events, and on a Saturday, they raced in nine official races between August and October. And then they do this while they're committed to other things. We have two full-time volleyball players, two full-time band members, full-time soccer girls. And so they do all of this and everything else. And so it's really, really remarkable what they do. So I just want to point out the level of commitment. Like Mr. Flood said, they did make it to state, but if I could just go back a couple, they're District 10 champions for the third time in five years. For the sixth year in a row, went to regionals as a team. And we've been so close year after year. You have to be in the top four out of 23 teams to make it to state. And this year, they finally got it done. They were fourth at regionals and advanced to state. That's the first time since 1997 that that's happened here. And so, yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce these girls and recognize them individually. If y'all want to go ahead and come up. So the ULL only allows seven girls on a varsity. We have 10 here. Three of them are alternates. That's a big deal. That means they're the top three JV girls. They go with us to regionals. And there was a moment, there was a time this year when we were potentially going to run, at one point, possibly all three at regionals. We had multiple, a sickness, we had an injury. And so it's not easy to get girls to continue to practice for two more weeks for no reason to be an alternate. These girls did that. And so I'll introduce them first. Emma Lindemood is a sophomore. Nola Briscoe and Jalissa Ortiz were our three alternates. Nola was the JV district champion. Jalissa finished second at district, and Emma finished fourth at district. And then now to our seven varsity runners. Freshman Kenzie Reiney. She finished 12th at district. Sophomore Sadie Huey. She's a district medalist. She finished 10th at district. Sophomore Jordan Geesman. She's also a district medalist, finishing eighth. Sophomore Sophia Hodges. District medalist, she finished seventh. Stephanie Favella, sophomore. Stephanie was the District 10 4A champion, and I can't find the last time that a girl won the district cross-country meeting individually. It goes back into some records that weren't kept very well before the internet and things like that, but it's been a long time. And she was also a regional medalist, so she finished in the top 10 at regionals, which means if the team had not advanced, she still would have advanced to state as an individual. So that's really hard to do. Sophomore Michaela Jutan. She finished third at district. And then I did leave Paola last. She's our lone senior. Paola's stuck it out for a long time. That's hard to do in a sport like cross-country. To keep going and do it year after year after year is really hard. Most girls don't do it for four years and finish it out. She did it all while maintaining her grade. She's No stats, though, for Paola. I'm just going to leave it at this with just some description. She may be possibly the most dependable runner that I've ever had. When she says she's going to be there, that's where she is. And when she's not there, there's a legitimate reason. And just the most dependable integrity, all of these things come to mind. And I wish I had more like her. We're super, super excited to watch where she goes as she graduates and what she does in track. But 2023 Lady Cat Cross Country Team.
And one more group to recognize. So our district champs in volleyball this year. We're excited to recognize. Coach Hammett had another function. We appreciate all the time she gives and what she does, but she's also a mom and has other things she needs to do at times. So Coach Scholar Warwick, one of her assistants, is going to fill in for Coach Hammett tonight.
So Coach Hammett had a few words that she would like for me to read to all of you here. She says, first of all, I would like to thank the board members for having us here tonight. We appreciate all that you do, not only for our athletic program, but for our entire school district. Our success would not be possible without all of your support. These young women right here next to me accomplished so many things this season, a few of which include a 28-7 overall winning record this season, 12-0 in district, back-to-back district champions in 2022 and 2023, by district champions three years in a row, and then an area runner-up, losing in five close sets to Aubrey, who went on to the regional finals. To top it off, this group of Lady Cats also received several district, county, and state awards. She's so proud of you guys. We all are, myself included. Seeing your hard work day in and day out every day is incredible. Your dedication to your sport and your teammates is really amazing to see. Hopefully, many more successful seasons to come from the Lady Cat volleyball team. So congratulations to you ladies for a job well done this season. When I call your name, please step forward to receive your certificate. Sophomore Bella Van Warre, academic all-district, District 10 4A first-team all-district, and All Johnson County Most Improved. Congratulations, Bella. Junior Kitzia Cortez, District 10 4A honorable mention, All Johnson County honorable mention. Junior Kyla Williams, academic all-district, District 10 4A honorable mention, All Johnson County honorable mention. Junior Amari Goveya, academic all-district, District 10 4A co-newcomer of the year, and All Johnson County co-newcomer of the year. She's not here. Junior Bree Hubbard, academic all-district, District 10 4A first-team all-district, and first-team All Johnson County. Congratulations, Bree. Senior Trinity Roden, academic all-district, District 10 4A second-team all-district, second-team All Johnson County. Senior Katrina Leverett, academic all-district, District 10 4A second-team all-district, second-team All Johnson County. Senior Ashton Anglin, academic all-district, District 10 4A first-team all-district, first-team All Johnson County. Congratulations, Ashton. Senior Logan Reed, academic all-district, TGCA academic all-state, District 10 4A offensive MVP, first-team All Johnson County. Congratulations, Logan. Senior Bryn Staten, academic all-district, TGCA academic all-state, District 10 4A co-setter of the year, All Johnson County co-setter of the year, holds the season and career school record for assists. And then also, Lila Heiner and Peyton Bauer joined us on our playoff push this season.
this time, we extend the opportunity for public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. We have two people signed
They stepped up in a big way for us. Thank you, ladies, for all that you did for this team this year.
up to address the board tonight. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity
Last but not least, Senior Bailey Mobley, academic all-district, District 10 4A MVP,
to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting and wishing to participate in a public forum must complete a sign-up form and submit the
All Johnson County MVP, TGCA all-state, holds the season and career school records for
form to the board secretary or designee 10 minutes prior to the meeting being convened.
kills, digs, and aces.
Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation.
And of course, head coach Courtney Hammett was the District 10 4A Coach of the Year.
Personal attacks on district employees or students will not be allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm, professional demeanor.
Congratulations, ladies.
Upon expiration of the three minutes, I will call the next person that signed up to speak. Please note, the Open Meetings Act does not require the board to respond to any comments or complaints from a member of the public regarding an agenda item. We will now begin public forum. First, we have Nova Olson. Ms. Goodlow will keep your three minutes, and we will notify when there's one minute left. Your three minutes will begin now.
In regards to the long-range facility planning and change in board member elections from cumulative to by position, there's been a repetitive and deeply concerning lack of transparency with a punitive response to questions from stakeholders. Harassment and serious threats have been utilized to attempt to silence points of view, which for clarification, Mr. Stevenson is abridging First Amendment rights. Those points of view not in agreement with the current administration. When I've attempted to observe or educate myself as a stakeholder and voter, I have been shut out and/or accused of, and I quote, aggressively questioning. It makes, it all makes me wonder, what are you afraid of stakeholders learning? I am again asking trustees for you to start providing information to stakeholders, like board book documents, those things that would explain what decisions are being made, what's being discussed by the board, including district bond planning information in its entirety, including how much money is being paid by these entities which stand to gain monetarily from being involved in this process.
Next, we have Brian Hunt.
Okay, thank you, board. I just wanted to speak on item 6B tonight, as we recognize one of our new officers. And I want to take the time and the ability, my rights as a public participation, is to say thank you for creating our Godly ISD Police Department. I had a staff member come up to me today, and they have a four-year-old son. And their four-year-old son, new Officer Rizzo. How awesome is that, that a four-year-old now has a good relationship with a police officer? And that would not have happened if this board and this administration did not have the vision to start our police department. So thank you for that. They have been so helpful in implementing some of our state standards, and it's just so great to see them on campuses each and every day doing great things for kids, helping staff members, helping all of us. They have been such a blessing. So thank you for that vision. Thank you for starting that, and thank you for supporting it. And she has been such a blessing to me, I know to Chief Quinteros as well. And we just look forward to her continuing to be here and keep doing great things for kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into superintendent reports.
All right, I think first up, we have, we were going to introduce.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It is my pleasure as Godly ISD's Chief of Police to introduce you to the Police Department's newest member. Please meet Officer Alex Rizzo. A little bit about Alex. She was born and raised in the state of Florida. She attended the University of Central Florida and earned a Bachelor of Science in Health and Public Affairs and Criminal Justice. During her studies, she specialized in forensic science and molecular and microbiology. Alex is certified as a crime scene investigator, as well as in crime analysis and data mapping. Alex began her career law enforcement in 2009, when she first interned for the Brevard County Medical Examiner's Office. Alex transferred to the Hillsborough County Medical Examiner's Office, where she worked as a forensic technician and medicolegal death investigator. Alex then went on to work for the Kissimmee Police Department as a crime scene investigator and certified specialist in firearms, explosives, trajectory analysis, and reconstruction. Alex's IAI, that's International Association for Identification, certified, as well as Florida IAI, certified in forensics. Alex was trained at the Seminole County Sheriff's Office Academy, where she was one of three females out of a total of 400 applicants to be selected for their very first-ever sponsored academy. Officer Rizzo served the community as a deputy sheriff and was following her passion by beginning the process of transferring to the schools as an SRO, School Resource Officer. Alex moved with her family to the great state of Texas, and shortly after arriving, continued her career in law enforcement as an officer serving the communities of North Texas with the Burleson Police Department, University of North Texas Police Department, and Godly Police Department. It was during this time that Alex honed her skills, working patrol and conducting investigations, as well as engaging in community-oriented policing, all while continuing her education and training. With her years of experience in law enforcement, coupled with her formal education, Alex earned her Advanced Peace Officer Certificate, and with time, she will very soon be awarded her Master's Peace Officer Certificate here in Texas. Alex joined Godly ISD Police Department in October of 2023, and in that short time, she has already become a favorite of the students and staff members at all of our campuses. Alex is certified in ALERT, that's Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training, or Active Shooter Response Training, and she is slated to attend instructor school and SRO school in early 2004. Alex's training, education, personal and professional experience, and outgoing personality make her a well-rounded and highly valued asset to the district, as well as to the children of this community. Thank you for your service, Officer Rizzo, and welcome to Godly ISD family.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
And maybe for Dr. Dear, but one of my questions was answered, that she was hired October of 2023. I wasn't sure what month she was hired in. But my question is, are we currently hiring any other SROs, or is hiring open or closed?
We do not plan on hiring anymore this school year. We hope to probably add, hopefully add another one, perhaps maybe next school year, depends on budgeting.
Okay. And then my next question is, what is the application process for SROs? Are all SROs who go to the interview process, do they receive a polygraph test?
So when it pertains to doing a background investigation, if applicants make it to that portion, then yes, a polygraph test is a part of the background process.
Okay. And then lastly, according to DC Local, any employee that is non-contractual can be accepted, or excuse me, there's an exception for board approval. Is she contractual or non-contractual? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Construction updates.
All right, good evening. Jeff Stevens with Reader Construction, here to give you an update on Godly High School Phase III, the Fine Arts Edition. Can't see a whole lot change here. We've got our cap sheet on the roof on Area A and B, which means roof is pretty much done. You can kind of see a little bit at the top of the photo. We started doing some flat work around the exterior of the building sidewalks. And there on the right side of the photo, you can see we've got the sidewalks going. Almost done with exterior sheathing down C, which is the band hall, the storm shelter addition. We've got, I think, probably 70 or 80% of our windows in. And brings us to the inside. This is CL&amp;I. This is at the serving lines, looking out. About 60% through with tape, bed, and texture and paint. We've got all of our overheads done, ceiling grids in. We're starting to drop lights and put ceiling, HVAC registers in. That ought to be done this week, and then we'll start putting ceiling tile up. And this is from the temporary wall looking out. And so you've got the serving line kitchen area on the right, I think. No. Sorry, I can't really see that up there. All right, so yeah, here we go. So you've got the serving lines, kitchen on the left. Again, same thing, tape bed texture is almost done. We're supposed to be polishing floors starting Wednesday after Christmas. That's about a three-day process. Here is a picture of the kitchen. The kitchen's pretty much complete, waiting on kitchen equipment. Kitchen equipment's supposed to start arriving tomorrow. They'll set it in place. We've got a couple days' worth of plumbing and electrical connections that we've got to make, and then they've got to, the kitchen folks will come back and commission all the equipment. And then this is where I had a hard time kind of taking pictures, because our mason is really doing a wonderful job. I've shared a photo from this spot, I think, the last two months previous, and all you could see is a very large room. Our mason's doing a fantastic job with CMU. So he'll probably, and this is in the storm shelter, so we'll probably be done with masonry just right at the very start of the new year, so not next week, but the week after. And then that means we can go, start continuing with wall finishes, MEP overhead. But our mason, I have to speak very highly of them, because they've come in and gone much faster than we thought they were going to. So this is another photo, standing in this exact same spot. I've shared two photos the last two months previous, and it's completely unrecognizable, because they've almost got all the walls up in the storm shelter. And that gets through the update. Any questions?
Standard question, substantial completion date?
Still January 24th.
Okay, I have to tell you, thank you for communicating with your team and stressing that with the team. I happened to be driving by last night at about Can't see a whole lot change here. We've got our cap sheet on the roof on Area A and B, which means roof is pretty much done. You can kind of see a little bit at the top of the photo, we started doing some flatwork around the exterior of the building sidewalks. And there, on the right side of the photo, you can see we've got the sidewalks going. Almost done with exterior sheathing down C, which is the Band Hall, the Storm Shelter Edition. We've got, I think, probably 70 or 80% of our windows in. And brings us to the inside. This is CL&amp;I, this is at the serving lines, looking out. About 60% through with tape, bed, and texture and paint. We've got all of our overheads done, ceiling grids in. We're starting to drop lights and put ceiling, HVAC registers in. That ought to be done this week, and then we'll start putting ceiling tile up. And this is from the temporary wall looking out. And so, you've got the serving line kitchen area on the right. No. Sorry, I can't really see that up there. All right, so yeah, here we go. So, you've got the serving lines, kitchen on the left. Again, same thing, tape bed texture is almost done. Supposed to be polishing floors starting Wednesday after Christmas. That's about a three-day process. Here is a picture of the kitchen. The kitchen's pretty much complete, waiting on kitchen equipment. Kitchen equipment's supposed to start arriving tomorrow. They'll set it in place. We've got a couple days' worth of plumbing and electrical connections that we've got to make, and then they've got to, the kitchen folks will come back and commission all the equipment. And then this is where I had a hard time kind of taking pictures because our mason is really doing a wonderful job. I've shared a photo from this spot, I think, the last two months previous. And all you could see is a very large room. Our mason's doing a fantastic job with CMU. So, he'll probably, and this is in the Storm Shelter, so we'll probably be done with masonry just right at the very start of the new year, so not next week, but the week after. And then that means we can go, start continuing with wall finishes, MEP overhead. But our mason, I have to speak very highly of them because they've come in and gone much faster than we thought they were going to. And so, this is another photo, standing in this exact same spot. I've shared two photos the last two months previous, and it's completely unrecognizable because they've almost got all the walls up in the Storm Shelter. And that gets through the update. Any questions?
Standard question, substantial completion date?
Still January 24th.
Okay, I have to tell you, thank you for communicating with your team and stressing that with the team. I happened to be driving by last night at about 8:00, and I noticed things were open that aren't normally open at 8:00 at night. So, I stopped and asked whoever it was, name was Dennis, and he's like, "Yep, we've got people working. We're going to meet January the 24th." So, you're communicating well with your team, and they are believers in it.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got, we've got a good internal team, and we've got a great group of subcontractors on this project. So, it definitely helps, and I appreciate that. Anything else? Good, thank you all.
Going into the update for Phase II. These photos are about a week and a half old now, but you can see this is the Wild looking east. We have the roofing complete, which is great. You'll actually see some photos a little bit later, or more current, from the ground looking up. We have all the openings enclosed, the windows installed, as well as the one portion you see there on the southwest side is enclosed as well. Metal paneling is continuing up the building. We got the balance of it should be here the rest of, the end of this week to keep us going and complete the Wild and move over to the arena. This, of course, is looking at the Wild from the east elevation. You can see all the glass is in on this face along the collaborative areas at the top there. You'll start seeing railing and ceiling going in on those precast panels up at the top, starting to really close that in and looking complete. This is down low. This is from just last week. You can see we have all the windows enclosed. On the north elevation there, we have the metal panels, the vertical ones going up. Those are continuing, as well as that archway right there going into the seating area is getting bricked up and will be furred out for the panels over the archway. This is going through the Wild. This is actually the tech room on the south side. What I'm showing here is that we have all our grid in, we're setting fixtures, and we're actually starting to close this up, the hard lids now. We started AC units up today, starting today, so we'll start getting conditioned air through that space, which is real good, which will let us start to get some of the flooring in, start putting doors up, really pushing through this area. This is the bathroom. You can see we have finishes, and there's one of the hard lids in the bathroom, taped and floated, getting ready to be sanded and textured. And down the corridor, you can see that's already been painted and ready for the lay-in. This is the second floor, looking down at the aluminum bleachers. You can see we have the railing going in there, as well as around to the connector area. You can see we have the topping slab poured along that full radius, and we'll be starting to install railings by the end of the year through here. This is over at the arena. We've actually started putting the white cap down over the roof, so this dried in, but on its way to completion, the roofing portion here. You can see we've installed windows, and you probably noticed as you came in today, we have a lot of the glass in on the first and second floor on this east, north, and south side, really starting to make it, make it look different over there. This is inside the arena itself. You can see we have all the mechanical going in overhead. We're starting to pull out those dance floors. The right picture is actually looking east, and you can see the majority of that dance floor is pulled out. The fur down is rocked, and we'll start closing that up, and you'll start seeing the overhead fixtures and speakers going in. We're running the electrical over to them now. So, you'll start seeing those hung up in there. Of course, you have your scoreboard and your basketball goals already up. This is looking at the visitor's side or building F. You can see we have the main structure poured. We're working on the ramp coming up. All that steel is installed for the second floor there. We're setting deck now, gearing up to pour that second floor deck and really continue up with the walls there. Any questions?
Can you give us the completion dates for all of the projects?
Absolutely. The Wild is March 5th right now of next year, and the arena is tracking for 5/13.
So, those have changed pretty drastically. What, why? What were the factors?
The big issue there, which we finally have resolved, is a permanent issue with Bayou Vista or Bureau Veritas. And we've gotten that resolved. We've gotten inspections. That was holding up some overhead work, which we're now able to complete. So, we've actually accelerated and had trades come in over the weekend and really knock out that work that was getting held up to suck that time back in. So, you'll start seeing that being impacted as well, coming back the other way.
Are you going to be taking any other measures to try to regain some of the time that you've lost?
We're looking at everything, obviously sequencing. We try to minimize it as much as we can. We're still evaluating everything that impacted because we just had it resolved last week.
You may not be able to answer this question. What's the seating capacity in the arena? Somebody else might. Yes, Aubrey can answer that question for me. I'm sorry.
I'm going to give him the wrong number.
The seating capacity in the arena should be around 1,900.
1,900, is that with the?
That includes the presentation room on the end. That will seat around 300.
Okay, so it's 1,600 and 300. Thank you. What is our current gym capacity? Anyone? That's. Okay. Okay, we can look, and I can get that later. Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't know if it's that high. I think it's lower than that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into the business portion of the meeting, and first, we'll consider the consent agenda items, which is minutes of the regular meeting, November 27, 2023. It's the special meeting of December 3, 2023, and special meeting of December 11, 2023. District financial report, district tax report, district monthly investment, district monthly investment and cash report, and also considering authorizing an alternate approver to act as the superintendent alternate for approving staff requests through TEA account.
I have a few questions. On item 7A1, the meeting minutes for 11/27, there's a revision that needs to be made for the item. Consider approval to the resolution of the official ballot for Johnson County Board of Directors appointment. Under the second motion, there should have been one no vote for myself. It said past 6-0. It should have been 5-1. And then on item 7A2, I noticed a budget deficit for food service of $222,974 and a budget deficit of $850,631 for the IMS debt service. Do we have funds to cover these deficits?
Yes, we do. I'll let Ms. DePalma come up here and explain.
All right, good evening. Yes, first, as Dr. Dear explained, we do have funds to cover this. In addition, these are same as the reports from the previous month. There's been no change in that. So, this is going back to the original budget that was adopted by the board. So, these deficits were adopted previously, but yes, there are fund balance to cover these.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then another question on item 7A5. I was just curious what the approver for the TEA teal accounts are. I wasn't familiar with that. I just was curious what that is.
I'll let Mr. Carnes answer that one. It's just one of the many things we have to do in our.
Right, so TEA, teal is TEA login, and so, we have people throughout the district that need access to different accounts when new people come in or when things change. I'm basically the guy that goes in and clicks yes, that they're okay, that they're good people, and that they are approved. So, TEA then sent this to us, I think, last week, that basically my subscription is running out, and I need to, I need to re-up my subscription to be able to approve that. Just a little thing to just take something off of Dr. Dear's plate.
Okay, thank you.
And I think there's, we've several, like, Airmie, she's an approver. I think Dr. Nix is approver for certain things. There's a lot of different people approve different, different items for TEA.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion now.
Can we remove the minutes from the motion so that we can get those corrections made before we vote on it?
The minutes for November 27, 2023?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, this will be for the special meeting of December 3, 2023, and the special meeting of December 11, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
That motion by Terry is second by Krista. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number 7B will consider recommendation from the 2023 Long Range Facility Planning Committee.
All right, you guys come on up to the podium here. We've got a few members of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee that have been gracious enough to come up and talk us through the recommendation. We really appreciate you guys coming up. Phyllis, do you need to cue anything up, or are they just going to take it away? Okay.
Good evening, President McKittrick and trustees. We are the representatives of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. Our charge was to recommend projects to be included in a potential bond election. I'm Jamie Roy. Most of you know me. I have three children in the district now. One's already graduated. And I've been in the district for 14 years, had kids in the district for 14 years. And I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of growth, all primarily to the positive. And what we're seeing now, and the reason that I wanted to be on this, this board, was to promote the, the growth of the district in a way that would lead to a continuum of the education that my children are already receiving and have received. And that is primarily the smaller classrooms, the facilities that are going to promote their growth and other children's growth. So, we'll introduce the rest of them here.
Good evening. Name's Cody Hudson. I have three kids in the district. They're all at Legacy. I have a fifth, a third, and a kindergartner at this time. We've been in this district for about four years now. And one of the main reasons we wanted to be a part of this was knowing that, you know, we made the choice to have children, so we got to do the right thing by them. And making sure that this district's taken care of is vital to our children's success at the end of the day. So, thank you.
Hello, Travis Spears. I've been in the district for, we moved in October of '22. I have one eight-year-old about to be nine at Legacy, and then we have a four-year-old who is at a preschool here in town at a local church, and then going to be attending that same elementary school next, next school year. So, and I think my colleagues here have already kind of spoke to it a little bit, but, you know, not wanting to have the growth really control us, but having some intention behind it, and we want our kids to have this successful career here in Godly ISD, and just making sure that we are extremely intentional about everything that we're putting forth to the board. And then also, you know, trying to make it as transparent as possible. Just from my own perspective, last year, it was, it was tough to support some of the things that were on the vote last year. But being a part of it last year and seeing the difference of it this year, and just, I think there was more of an intentional focus, and I think we were able to address a lot of what we got back, feedback from the community, so.
Yeah, my name is Greg Fancher. I've been in the district, I guess, about 11, 12 years now. I've got a seventh grader, a ninth grader, and then my daughter was in the district for 10 years. And so, I've been on a few of these committees in the past. I will say that I thought this was a really well-run, committed committee, if that makes sense. And I think that they, they truly were trying to focus on needs that we have now, as opposed to aspirational things, as opposed to, whoa, it'd be really neat if we had this. We really focused on what was needed in the next few years, and so I think that's where we, we ended up with this. And I'll turn it back over.
And we'd like to give a special thanks to everybody who turned up for the meeting meetings. We did have five meetings in October, November, and December. More than 100 individuals were invited to attend. Average attendance was between 40 and 50 people. Community members, business owners, and parents and staff all were there. Two board members were on the committee, Ms. Lane and Ms. Goodlow. We met at locations throughout the district. We actually met at each school, which was a benefit to those who don't have children in, in some of the schools, that could see the facilities there. Several of the committee members are here tonight, and so if you've served on the committee, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. So, we studied demographic projections, construction costs, financial capacity, opportunities for students, findings from previous committees, and more. We encourage anyone who wants to know more of what we studied to ask any committee member or visit the Godly ISD website. The presentations we saw and the materials we studied are posted for the public to review. So, what stood out to me in the process personally was just the, the clarity with which the members of the Huckabee team and Ms. Phyllis and Ms. Aubrey presented their information. That was very helpful, some things that I had never learned because I was not on this committee for the prior bond. And of course, the bond prior to that, several years ago. I, I really would encourage anybody who is not on one of these committees in the future to participate because it is very enlightening to understand what all goes into planning of new facilities and, and planning for growth. So, I enjoy serving on the committees. I enjoy getting to know all the, the members of the committees, the members of the communities, teachers, just fellow parents. It's good to know what everybody's goals are. Our committee was focused on several categories of projects. Projects that address enrollment growth, maintenance and renovation projects, projects at the high school, and district-wide projects. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson.
On this slide, you'll see our recommendations. We agreed that if 70% voted in favor of a project, then we would be, it would be included. Our goal was that 100% of the committee would support the final recommendation. We achieved both of these tasks. The committee was focused on several categories of projects. Projects that address enrollment growth, such as a new, a new school, additions to existing campuses, transportation, maintenance and renovation projects that extend the life of assets we already own and provide equity between campuses across the district. Projects at the high school that all district students in the community can take advantage of, and district-wide projects to improve safety and technology. Our recommendation is rooted in the growth of Godly is experiencing. We looked at both the moderate growth and also, sorry, lost my spot. Growth comes quickly or moderately. This recommendation will allow us to be ready. Financial outlook is improving. Recent announcements by the Federal Reserve indicate that they will cut interest rates three times in 2024. Experts indicate that the housing market will respond favorably. Every single project in the recommendation will address the challenges that come with being a fast-growth school district. This next slide is recognizing the growth in our area. We spent a lot of time reviewing the demographic report. We studied the high and moderate growth potential of Godly. Under the moderate growth scenario, some campuses could begin to experience crowding in the. the moderate growth scenario, some campuses could begin to experience crowding in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Godly Middle School is projected to be overcapacity in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. The committee is recommending a plan that is focused more on the moderate growth scenario. If the high growth scenario occurs, another bond election could be needed in the next two to three years. High growth scenarios could result in five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight students by the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. On the last slide that I'm presenting, two projects that stand out, we think about would be a new elementary school and renovation in addition to the Godly Middle School. Elementary School number four will accommodate seven hundred and forty students. The middle school renovation in addition will accommodate an additional six hundred and fifty students, bringing the total capacity of the middle school to twelve hundred students, and will serve grades six through eight, because the sixth-grade campus will soon outgrow being able to hold a full grade level. One call out from this addition and renovation would be that the sixth grade would actually have its own wing within the building. So while they would all be able to be together as a middle school, the sixth grader would still be separate from seventh grade. Thank you.
Hello again. As you can see from those last couple slides, growth is happening, you know, regardless of want or any outside market forces. So having that realization, we had to respond, or we felt that we had to respond with intentional action planning. And a critical component of that is hearing our community and our neighbors and understanding what happened with the last bond. And I think one of the, the, the main focuses that we received feedback from, from the community is they wanted more of the proposed package to be included for maintenance and renovation projects. So in response to that, one of the things that we were able to obtain is an almost fifty percent of the projected projects are all focused for maintenance and renovation projects. Those projects are not listed on the slide. Oh, sorry about that. So those would include renovations and projects for Legacy Elementary, RB Godly, Godly Middle School, and with a focus for lifecycle replacements at the sixth-grade campus. The maintenance items include replacements of some roofs, HVAC systems, fire alarm systems, et cetera. Some campuses will also receive finish-up dates and other aesthetic improvements. One big call out would be for RB Godly and Legacy Godly. Again, I have, my eight-year-old goes to Legacy, and one of the focus points, again, was going to be more of an equity change for kids who are at Legacy or RB Godly versus any of the new schools built up. So I think it does address that concern and feedback, one personally as a parent, but then also, I know, is a bigger concern for a lot of our neighbors and community members as well. All right, to the next one. It is not the focus of the bond, but there are several high school projects included in our recommendation. All students in Godly ISD will one day attend the high school. So when completing projects at the high school, it is important to note that these projects have the potential to impact all students. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, sorry. That's, that's it. The, for, for the proposed projects at the high school, the auditorium that seats twelve hundred and will operate as a theater classroom, special education addition, ag project center addition, locker rooms for tennis and ag, and paving the home stadium parking lot. Thank you.
All right, I guess I get to bring it on home. All right. When we're talking about two specific items that, that I wanted to address, one, I don't know what that slide's supposed to look like, but it includes district-wide projects such as technology upgrades. That doesn't talk about like iPads or laptops or anything like that. That's talking about, you know, hardwiring electronics, okay? You gotta run cables. There's, there's, there's new technology every single day. We need new monitors. We need new projection, projections boards, things like that. That's the type of technology upgrades that we're talking about, not the, the laptops or iPads or anything like that. We also included some safety and security projects such as fencing, security film, cameras. I think all of those in this day and age, just what you gotta do. And so that's something the board took into consideration, or the committee, I'm sorry. And then a new transportation center and the purchase of additional buses. Fact is, we're growing. And so we need, we just need more buses. And it's, it's really that simple. One of the things that I thought was really good about the committee was we were given two options on the bus allotment. One, I don't recall the number specifically, I'm sure Dr. Dear has those numbers, but one called for a certain number of buses over, I think, a six-to-eight-year period. One called for a certain number of buses over a three-to-five-year period. The committee went with the three-to-five-year period for this bond because we wanted to really focus on what is absolutely needed right now. And so yes, there's going to be a, a need for additional buses in the future. But again, this bond, what do we need right now? No fluff, no stuff. What do we need? And that's, that's what we ended up with. The next slide, this is kind of my passion speech right here, okay? And so bear with me for a second. This auditor, the auditorium that has been proposed has been something that's been discussed in previous bonds. It's been something that's kind of been pushed to the side. And I just want to say in the most emphatic way possible, we need this auditorium. This is not something that, that would be great to have. This is not something that, boy gee, that, that sure would be nice. This is something that we have got to have. Mr. Walker does a fantastic job holding band concerts in the middle school gym. Our kids deserve better. Every other school in the district, every other school that I've been to, frankly, in this area, has an auditorium. It's really frankly embarrassing that we don't. There are multiple needs for this auditorium. One, it's a classroom. Every day, this auditorium is going to get used. Every day, the band kids, the choir kids, the theater kids, I go to church with the theater teacher, and, and she has put it in my ear to, to mention the, the theater program that is, that is going on now. It's doing a fantastic job. There are businesses now in the city of Godly that are dedicated to theater and choir. Its, its involvement in this community is, is strong. Those businesses are going to be able to have a space in Godly to have those performances. As opposed to, I, I think they're renting out churches in other cities right now for their performances. We can do better. We should do better for these kids. There's not a single item on this bond that is going to impact more kids than that auditorium. Every single kid in this district is going to, to sit in that auditorium at some point. And it also has the opportunity for community involvement, has the opportunity for lots of different things. And so unfortunately, when we look at the, the bond proposals and we budget things out, there is the chance that we may not be able to build the auditorium immediately. I, I defer to, to this board and, and to what they want to do in terms of priorities. But I will jump up and down and, and beg and plead, as quickly as you can, please build this auditorium. Okay, that's my high horse. All right. All right. Getting into the, just generalities, okay? These are the recommended projects. We've got the RB Godly renovation. We've got the different renovations to the other schools, the sixth-grade campus lifecycle replacements. We've got a new elementary. We've only got one of those on this cycle. Transportation facility, the buses, the security improvements, the technology upgrades. There is a special education addition in here. Because we're a growing district, there are needs in that area that we just don't have the classroom space for at the current time. The ag project center addition, okay? This kind of goes to something personal. My daughter, we, we bought our lamb in June last year, and the ag building was already full, okay? So I had to keep that thing at my house. And it was a miserable experience. And so I would, I would love to see the addition there so that people like me don't have to have that same experience. Locker rooms for the tennis and, and the ag facility. And then I guess if you want to say one thing that could be considered a little bit of fluff is, is to pave the home stadium parking lot. But the reason it's included in this project is because the cost savings were so astronomical. If we do it now, as opposed to, to ten years from now, I mean, it was almost triple the price if we wait ten years to, to pave that parking lot. It just made sense to include it into this bond package. Where are we at? The growth, talking about the community on the bonding capacity, it will maintain the current tax rate. We are capped out on the tax rate. There can be no tax rate increase. I know that, that this board and, and everyone in the community keeps jumping up and down, saying that these bonds don't increase our tax rates. Some people are gonna believe you, some people aren't. But we understand that there is no tax rate increase through this bond. And it just kind of is what it is. Let's see. Oh, one thing I wanted to say just from, well, let's go to the next slide. These are, these are some of the projects that we are going to need in the future. We are going to need a couple of more elementary schools. We're gonna need a new middle school, as amazing as that sounds. My youngest is in seventh grade. And I was talking to Mr. Flood probably a couple months ago, and he said that that seventh-grade class could be the first six-A class in Godly, which is ridiculous if you think about it. I mean, when I moved here, this was a two-A. And my son in the seventh grade could be the first six-A class to graduate from Godly ISD. So it's coming. Just is what it is. It's, it's, it's here, and it's, and it's gonna keep coming. So there's a lot of things that we're going to need in the next ten to fifteen years. And that's, that's some of the things that, that we're gonna need. But, but we, again, focused, what do we absolutely need right now? This is what we absolutely need right now. I will gladly go on any Facebook podcast. I will gladly go to any community event that, that wants to have the discussion. I will gladly shout it to the rooftops that these are the projects that we absolutely have to have right now. And, and I'm willing to fight for it. And so we understand that you can modify these things. We understand that there may be some additions or subtractions that you make. I would ask, I would beg that you keep some of these, if not all of these, on, on the list, especially the auditorium. And I did want to thank Ms. Goodlow and Ms. Lane for being a part of the, the, the committee. I, I personally sat with Ms. Lane when we were going through these, these different projects, and I appreciated her insight and her leadership in that situation. And, and, you know, at the end of the day, we all raised our hands and said, we agree with this proposal. So I, I appreciate the board members that were able to contribute to that. And with that, I think I'm done. I know I talk too much. So that's the litigator in me. I apologize. Are there any questions? I'll answer any questions, too. Let's do this.
I'm ready.
All right.
All right. So I want to preface my questions, and I have a couple, sorry. I sat on this same committee as a member of the community and as a parent. And I have sat on a previous committee as a board member, and I was not a member of this committee. But I want to thank you because I personally know how much work and how much effort and how much passion each committee, committee member has put into the work that you are bringing to us tonight. So I just want to say thank you. And any questions I'm asking are not meant to be anything other than questions. So don't read anything into them. I noticed that several of you are from Legacy. And I wanted to see and make sure that all campuses were represented on the committee. So we had parents from every campus that was, were, was in attendance at these meetings and hadn't, have, has given their input, because I think the parents' input is probably one of the most important pieces.
Yeah, I, I personally sat at a table in one of the meetings with parents from each of the elementary schools that we have. My kids have been through every single campus in the district except for the newest elementary school. So I've, I've, I've been through all of them. And, and we've had, I know I personally sat with, with parents that were at each of the other elementary schools.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'm glad you have the mic because you passionately spoke about the auditorium.
Yep.
So is the auditorium equal to a PAC that we have discussed before? If not, how are they different?
Yeah, so I can talk generally.
Why don't, why don't Mr. Walker answer that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
He does a pretty good job of that. Come to, can you come to the mic?
And while you're going to the, to mic, specifically speak to seating capacities for me. I kind of showed a little bit of my hand when I asked about the seating capacity of the arena and also of the current place that we hold our band concerts, et cetera. So if you can speak a little bit to those things.
I hope that you didn't write down the number that I gave. I've been trying to research it more and more for the number of the arena. So to be honest, the, the seating capacity of a performing arts center and an auditorium, it doesn't really have anything to do with a seating capacity. A performing arts center is an item that is standalone from a school or for, or from a venue. It's its own facility that is meant to be a center for the performing arts. Different, different schools can use it. One to easily think about is Mansfield ISD or Arlington ISD that has a standalone performing arts center in the middle of their city or their district. That item must be listed on its own. It must be its own proposition, just like an athletic facility, like a football stadium or a, you know, like that kind of thing. An auditorium is traditionally attached to a school and can be used day-to-day as a classroom space. Like our theater arts program will use the auditorium every day for seven to eight periods a day. So the, the auditorium is attached to this, it would be attached to this school and used as, as an auditorium. Performing arts center is, I, I told the, the committee that I think that word was, that, that, that word was coming around because that's just what I traditionally call it, the PAC. But what we are asked, what the committee, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not a part of the committee. What the committee is asking to bring forward is an auditorium.
Okay. So we have a, a new fine arts wing is what we've been referring to it, that we're going to be opening in January, right? Yes, okay. So I know that there's space there for theater arts program. So I'm gonna just kind of be the devil's advocate. Why do we need, we haven't even gotten into our new space that we're gonna accommodate a theater arts program with. Why do they need an auditorium as well? Again, just being devil's advocate because the voters are gonna ask these questions. I totally support it.
I don't know who you want to answer questions right now.
Okay. Whoever wants to take it, just.
Okay. Just because I'm, I'm helping oversee this, there is no theater art space going in to this fine arts expansion.
There is not.
No, ma'am.
There are not any classrooms that are?
No, ma'am.
They're gonna stay, where are they right now? In the middle school still?
Currently, they are in the middle school facility across the hallway from the band hall. What was formerly the, the original band hall over there that we have worked hard to transform into a, a black box theater. The theater arts program right now is planning on moving over into the space right behind you. Right now, this is not a stage, though. They will, they will continue using the, like, what we're, what we call the black box, the black box theater. It's the theater arts classroom over in the middle school space. They will be using that for their production classes and their performance classes. That includes one-act play. This past weekend, like The Witch is Princess, all their performance classes will continue to use the middle school facility. Did that answer your question?
Yes, perfect. Thank you. You guys won't make it going or does somebody else want to ask?
I want to follow up with another question.
I want to follow up with another question. So just to make sure I heard you correctly, what facilities, what capabilities, what space would have been available as a part of a PAC? All of those, not just the auditorium itself, but the capabilities will still be incorporated into what we will now call the auditorium?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, next question I had was you spoke to the 70% guy, you know, if there was 70%, then it would be put on the list and your goal was to have 100% support from the committee and that you, multiple people stated that you had 100% of all committee members supporting what you brought to us tonight.
That's correct. The way it worked out was we divided up into small groups. I think there was no more than four at a table and that table voted on which of the, I think there were something like 30 items or something to that effect. It was a lot as to what we wanted to recommend. And if it reached 70% of those small groups, then it got put up on the board as something that we were willing to at least consider supporting. And then at the end, we had, well, once we got that 70%, then we had individual votes on each section and so you could voice whether you, you know, as a, you know, how high of a percentage, above 70% we got individually as opposed to the group setting for each individual item. And then at the end, we did one big vote and we said, you know, "Does everybody here support this bond package?" And everybody voted yes. We gave everybody the opportunity to voice any disagreements. We gave everybody the opportunity to say, "I can do everything but this." And at the end of the day, I mean, there were quite a few people there and everybody in that room voted yes that they would support this bond package. I do want to make one caveat to that and I forgot to mention it in my little spiel. Originally, the bond package was 322 million that, or 325 million, something to that effect, that the group considered. We had a meeting last week where it was determined that just because of bonding capacity, some of these items may not be able to be built right away. And because of that, there's the potential that these items would cost as much as 355, what we're asking for. And so the group approved all of these items. At the time, it was estimated it was going to be 325, but that's when we thought, hey, we can build it all right now or, you know, relatively quickly. But because of the bonding capacity, there's a chance some of this may not be able to be built for four years plus. And so that could cost more. Hopefully, it doesn't, but we built in that contingency up to 355.
Thank you. My next question is for Ms. Goodlow and Ms. Lane. Were you in attendance when that vote, that 100% vote was taken?
Yes, I was in attendance at that meeting.
Okay.
I do have a question, though, regarding, I wasn't able to go to the meeting last Wednesday because my students had a Christmas performance. But I was wondering how supportive the committee members that were in attendance at last Wednesday's meeting were with the increased cost going from 324 million to 355 million and if there was any concerns voiced about that increased cost and also pushing those projects out?
Not on the increased cost. There was no concern on that, just because it just kind of is what it is on the cost. Unfortunately, we don't get to, we don't get to determine that. At the end of the day, we still felt like it was significantly, it's significantly less than half of what the last bond was and it counts for needs that are necessary right now in the next three to, I think, three to four years. And so with the bonding capacity, there was some concern that one or more of these items may not be able to be built within that three to four range. But we looked at it as, but these are necessary in the next three to four years. So what we have brought to the board is what is necessary in the next three to four years, even if it may not be possible in the next three to four years. And so it's the board's responsibility to determine what gets built when. We understand that. But what we're bringing to the board is what is necessary in the next three to four years and we're hoping that either through, you know, student move-ins or just a tax base that rises through commercial activity, whatever we can do to help, we're hopeful that with a higher growth rate, we can build these projects in that three to four-year window. But that's not up to us.
I have a question maybe for Aubrey. Do we know what our current bond capacity is today?
I don't have that number offhand, but we did get some scenarios from Jeff Roberts where he shows what it will look like for a moderate growth and an aggressive growth rate that can be shared with you. It was shared with the committee last week.
And the committee liked the idea of going with the more conservative growth rate just to make sure. So that's why the escalation did drive the price up a little bit. And like Craig said, there's, we told the committee that, you know, land was going to have to be in this, said, "I know that's one thing that the board will most likely choose to add is money for land." So they didn't even include that in their recommendation. So we, anyway.
One more question, sorry. It's my last one, I promise. Community support. We obviously did not pass our last bond, so my major concern is, do we have the support in our community to pass this bond? And so I think we're really lucky to have Mrs. Lane on our board now because she was a proponent, or, excuse me, we were very much so outspoken about not supporting the last bond. So since you've sat on this committee now, they've obviously had 100% support, how do you think we're going to be able to get the support from the community that did not support the last bond?
My one complaint with the process, which I've been very vocal about, was that the public was not allowed access to these long-range meetings to be able to observe. They also were not Facebook Live'd or streamed by the board to the public. I do see that as being a stumbling block in passing this next bond because the community was very outspoken in the last bond that a lack of transparency and a lack of including the public in the process from start to finish was a major reason why they did not vote for the last bond. I don't know what the answer is to solve that. I certainly tried to audio record those meetings and share them to the public for transparency, but I do think that that will be, a roadblock we'll have to overcome because the community did make it very clear that they wished they could have sat and observed those meetings.
Does this bond have your support?
Like I said, that is one of the issues I had with this process was the fact that the community was not allowed to observe those meetings.
But that aside, when it comes to voting to put this on the May ballot, will you support it or not?
Well, that is a part of the process for me.
Okay.
So that is something I'm still weighing in my head. I just see that being an issue with voters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to say one thing on that. And like I said, and I'm sorry, I'm bogarting this whole thing. I apologize. But I do want to say one thing on that is you can't have the entire community at these committees. I mean, you can't have 10,000 people show up at the committees. You got to lessen it somewhat, but I'm a little surprised at that answer, to be quite honest. I sat at Ms. Lane's table. We were, we had a great dialogue, great dialogue. I really appreciated what she was saying. She supported those items. I don't know what else to say about that other than we were all in support of these items. And so if I need to help in that transparency in any way, I will gladly, you guys want me to show up at meetings in the community, you guys want me to go on podcasts, I will do the song and dance, all you want me to do. And I'll tell you everything I know. But at the end of the day, everybody in that room said yes to what we've put forward. Yep.
I think the gentleman behind had another comment.
Just wanted to make sure it was kind of known, like, there was no barring of anyone from participating or anything like that. I mean, I was asked to volunteer, or not asked to volunteer, but volunteer ask was out there and I did it last year and just to be honest with everyone here in the room, I voted, I participated in the committee last year and I voted against it. I felt it was too broad. It wasn't focused. It wasn't intentional enough. I plan to support and vote yes on this bond if we get to that point in May. So I just wanted to add to that and I appreciate the candor and the focus on transparency because, again, I think that that's paramount to have a success out in May. So appreciate it.
So I have a question, but I'm not sure who to direct it to and it may be too much in the weeds. One of our challenges with our current bonds have been contingency and obviously cost of things have been hard to predict. So what percentages have we included in this bond package or reword in the proposed amount?
Yeah, in the current amount, we have gone a conservative route. It varies based on how far as projects are out, you know, it's a higher amount, about 12% a year for the first, for the next year or so and then it goes down to, I think, 11%, 10%, 8% years moving out. In addition to that, we've also included $10 million in bond contingency in the overall $355 million request. Again, just to give those cushions for those unknowns that might come.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I just want to say thank you to, especially to the four of y'all and everyone that served on the committee. I know it's time away from your families, it's knots away from your family and that kind of thing, so I appreciate y'all coming out and supporting your community, trying to have a positive impact on your community and it means a lot. And I just want to recognize the four of y'all and then everyone else that served on the committee one more time.
Yes, thank you guys very much.
And I will entertain a motion now.
I know, that's just a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, sorry.
The board will chew on that for a little over a month and we will come back later with that.
All right, next one, move on to 7C, which is discussion and consideration to approve change order six for Godly High School Phase Two. Yep.
All right, last month, we shared with you the need for some additional contingency funds for high school phase two. We talked about the different RFPs that that would allow, that we could incorporate into the project by doing so. And we also discussed allocating some money towards some material escalation costs and those allowances are already in the project. It's just more expanding those to be beyond the change order, number one, scope of the visitor's side, but rather apply it to the entire project. And then S&amp;P using some of their contingencies as well towards material escalation. And so you have the formal change order document in your packet. There are no numbers that have changed since it was presented to you last month.
If approval of these changes, how will this affect substantial completion dates?
S&amp;P can probably speak to this more. There are probably some items, I know for one, the food service equipment and culinary that will extend the substantial completion date of that space, but that doesn't mean that we can't still complete the rest of the building on time and operate it. There might just be a couple of spaces or a couple of pieces that are running a little long.
So with the ones that we have proposed on here now, I know the longest lead item one is the kitchen equipment one. This is something that right now is, as soon as it's released, we're looking at at least four months as far as equipment delivery. Hookup's going to take a little bit after that. This is not something that would affect your use of the facilities while we're waiting on it. This is something that could come in and install once we receive it. The bigger question on that one is just going to be with the city. I know they're having some restructuring right now on it and getting their buy-in on it, but as far as your use of the facility, while these materials are coming in, it shouldn't be an issue. The fencing, just looking at here again, what we have all on here. Yeah, none of these, again, other than just the kitchen equipment, because that's the one that's going to actually have a lead time associated with it, especially with it being in the wild, which is the earlier substantial completion. That one is obviously just going to push out that substantial completion. We should be able to receive a TCO for that building while we wait for this equipment to come in, which would let you use the facilities.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Aubrey. I'll make a motion to approve the change order number six for phase two construction as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 4-1. 7D is discussion and consideration on adopting Godly ISD District Policy BBB Local, Board Member Election.
So this is the third showing or the third reading of this. We've talked about this at length. The only requirement is that we, the board, make the resolution and assign the places 60 days before the election date.
I have a couple of comments. Per policy, BBB legal and also confirmed by our attorney, Rhonda Crass. I just want to make sure that the board is aware that once we go to places, we can never go back or rescind the action, not even with a new board in the future. The decision would be absolutely final and so I would like to see before we do something so permanent for the public to have an opportunity to attend a public hearing, to voice their opinions of the proposed election method, so that we can make sure that this is something that the public really wants. One of my main concerns is voter confusion, that the city does their elections with the old plurality method and if the school district chooses a different method, I could see voter confusion in the future and I feel as if there is enough voter confusion already. And also, I'm not sure why the need for a place system, other than if we were to go to a member district because it makes it more difficult for the most popular candidates to get elected at large if we're in a place system without specific member districts. Those are just my concerns.
I make a motion to approve the changes to the Godly ISD District Policy BBB Local as presented and recommended.
I'll second. A motion by Terry, a second by Craig. Is there any further discussion? Yes. Go ahead. So, Ms. Lane, I hear the concern over going to places, but I recall just this very year there was a number of podcasts, broadcast, whatever, to where I think you participated in speaking of the backwardness of our district for having that large and why we didn't have places. This was back in the Aprilish-May timeframe. This was back in the Aprilish-May timeframe prior to the election, so I'm a little bit surprised, and I'm not trying to attack at all. I'm seeing an inconsistency that I'm raising a concern about.
Just for clarification, there was no concern on my part that we were at-large. I was explaining to people in other towns that weren't familiar with this process, that that was the process that Godly used. And so that's why I was addressing that, because a lot of people, like in Fort Worth, were not familiar with the at-large election method.
Yeah, fair enough. And obviously, Fort Worth is, what, 100 times larger than Godly?
Right.
So, total different environment, things that have to be addressed in that kind of environment that would never have to be addressed in a Godly culture. Again, smaller environment. Okay, thank you for the explanation. I guess the folks that have been moving in from larger areas are very familiar with the place arrangement. It's generally the smaller communities like Godly or some of the others around the area that have the at-large system. So I guess it doesn't really bother me that we would go to a place, if nothing else, to reduce confusion for folks that are moving in.
Well, those larger districts, they have single-member districts where those board members represent a certain geographical location. And so I guess that's the confusion I have with going to places without geographical locations, is because, like in Fort Worth, they represent certain areas.
Yeah, but even our neighbors to the east of us, Joshua, again, they're not specific to a region or section of their district, it is just a place within their district.
My, I got a question for, I'll direct to Dr. Deere. As a district grows, takes on new students, is this, would this be considered like a natural progression of how a district would move going forward? Would be at-large and then to places and then to geographical places, once that extreme growth is experienced, like a Fort Worth, or obviously a Dallas, somewhere like that?
Yes, sir, only districts smaller than us are still doing just general plurality like we are currently. And all of our neighbors around us have places. Only the very largest districts are single-member districts, like a Dallas, a Fort Worth, a Houston, you know, the much bigger, larger ones. So the vast majority of school districts in Texas use places, so this would be in line. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion by Terry, a second by Craig. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four to one. Next, we'll go to 7E, which is discuss proclamation 2024 science textbook selection process. Dr. Cottle? Yep?
Hello. Really, this is just informational, it's been quite some time since we've had a proclamation issued, and as we enter, as we enter into this round of instructional material selection, I just wanted to bring you an update on how the process is going to go. The last time a proclamation was issued was in 2020, and so it's been quite some time, probably for most of you all as well. So under proclamation 2024, we will be considering instructional materials for science in grades K through high school, as well as technology applications and several CTE courses. We may not select materials for every course, the money won't be there for every course, we may not need materials in every course, but definitely, science will be our big push, because that's all the way from kindergarten through high school. So we will spend a lot of our energy on that. Since the last time a proclamation was issued, the State Board of Education has changed the way the material adoption works. So now they technically adopt the materials at the state level. They take them through TEACs verification, through checking for errors, they go through a process where they open it up to the community across the state, they gather feedback from stakeholders, and then they issue a state-adopted list of materials that are approved by the state, and that came out December 1st. And so we now have a list of materials that we can choose from to purchase using our instructional materials allotment funds. So our process here, what we'll do, we have an advisory committee, that is, we opened it up to the teachers in the district, predominantly science, as I said. We have, I want to say 12 people right now that are science teachers across grade bands, across campuses, it's a good mix. We'll meet in January, and they'll start looking through all the materials. I had 18 boxes show up today of just sample materials. A good portion of them are going to be online, but of course, we're going to have some textbook, workbook things that we'll need to look through. So they'll start reviewing the list of materials from the state, we'll narrow it down to the top two, three, four. We'll have publishers come in and do presentations, show us what they have, ask questions. As we've always done in the past, we'll do a showcase, where we'll set out the materials from the final three or four that we've selected, and have it open throughout the afternoon and the evening, so teachers, any teachers, parents, community members can come through, look at the materials that are out, see what we're considering, and they'll leave feedback via a survey. Then the advisory committee will take that feedback, they'll take the information that they've gathered, they will present to the District Improvement Committee, District Education Improvement Committee, for consideration. That will be our primary district committee that will review the considerations. And then as an administration, every year, we come to you with our TEAC certification, which is our list of materials that we plan to use for the next school year, that verifies that we're covering the TEACs completely. And at that time, typically in April or May, you all look over those, and that's the time when you approve the selection of all materials for the next school year. So that TEAC certification shows what materials we plan on using the next year, and that we are planning on covering the TEACs in its entirety. So when we bring that to you, it'll have the list of everything we plan on using for the next school year for your approval. And so that's kind of the process. I'll probably come to you guys throughout the semester and just let you know where we are, what we're looking at, what materials we're honing in on, but I just wanted you to have kind of an overview of the process throughout the next few months. Any questions on that?
On the initial committee, why is it only teachers in the district?
Oh, actually, it's not. It's teachers, administrators, and instructional support people. We've never typically had anyone other than teachers on the committee, because they're looking at the grade level, things like that. We do have parents on the DEIC, and community members on DEIC, so that's why it also goes to a district-level committee for input. But we will also have the showcase night, where parent, anyone can come in and look at the materials and give feedback. So we do get feedback across the board.
And that feedback will be taken into consideration by the advisory committee?
Advisory committee and DEIC. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Any other questions? Okay, I do want to let you know one other thing, this came up in the last couple of days. We have identified an error, a data error. TEAs end, as far as we can tell, it's completely something that happened at the state level, but it refers to our STAR data. It has to do with the changing of the numbers, due to us opening Pleasant View and changing campus numbers, things like that. I just want to let you know, I found it, I'm working on it, I'm trying to figure out what exactly happened. It would be very complex to tell you, it just has to do with the number changing, and the data's kind of wonky right now, but as soon as I figure out what happened, I'll let you know what happened and how we can fix it. But I just want to let you know, we found it. It wasn't us, it was them, and we're going to get it fixed, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cottle. 7F, second review and possible consideration of Tasby Policy Update 122.
All right. Yep, so policy update 122. This is primarily based on the 88th legislature, and so numerous legal policies that the board does not adopt, but there are just a handful of local policies that are up for your discussion and possible approval. So with that, I will go through the local policies and kind of highlight the changes to each of them, and answer any questions, or try to answer any questions that you might have. All right. So CQB Local, and this information was provided to you, but we gave it to you last month as well, so hopefully you've had a little time to look at these. And so CQB Local, just add some language for a security incident. This is around technology resources and cybersecurity. So a security incident, that language has been added, and I looked up what a security incident is defined as, and that's a breach or suspected breach, and the introduction of ransomware into a computer, network, or a system. CSA Local, this is around facility, safety, and security. This is a new policy that has been added, and CSA Local is about our door, door audits and checking our doors weekly, so that, and then if anything is found, that that's reported to campus administration and to the District Safety and Security Committee. Okay. DC Local, this is about nepotism for bus drivers, that nepotism does not, does not apply for our bus drivers, and so there's a note that has been added into DC Local for employment of bus drivers related to, and so that is referred to in DBE legal. EHB Local, this is for curriculum design, this is dyslexia-related disorders, and basically states that will comply with the rules and standards for implementing the program to test students for dyslexia and related disorders. There was one policy that was moved, and that was EHBC Local, that was moved to EHBCA Local. That had to do with HB4545, which for students who did not pass their STAR test, it is now changed to what's called HB1416. And so because of that, that policy was moved to EHBCA Local. So that one was just, just a move. FEA Local, this one allows two days of excused absences for high school students for career exploration, so two days as a junior and two days as a senior. So if they go to, start trying to find the right career path for them, they can get four days out of high school to go explore for those careers. FFAC Local, this is, has to do with wellness and health services and medical treatment. So this requires, this is related to Senate Bill 629, that the district was required to have at least one person who is authorized and trained to administer opioid antagonists, and that the medication present during regular school hours on each campus that serves grades six through 12. And we took care of that quite some time back, and so that is now in the policy. All right, FFB Local, an employee who reports, this is around student welfare and crisis intervention, that an employee who reports a potential threat may elect to have the employee's identity to remain confidential and not be subject to disclosure under public information law. And that, that there's a clear procedure for students to report concerning behavior by another student. All right, and FL Local, this is student records that HB1416 that I mentioned for accelerated learning, so the references in there have been, accelerated learning committee has been replaced with accelerated education plan. So just a language update there. And those are the local policies from Update 122. Any questions?
Yes, I've got a couple.
Yes, sir.
And you might need a lifeline here.
Okay.
House Bill 3991 designated that, this is under special programs, instructional initiatives, seemed very unique and obscure, but that the first Friday in April is going to be Texas Fruit and Vegetable Day.
Texas Fruit and Vegetable Day.
And here's the part, requires appropriate instruction. So I get we haven't approved it, we haven't put it into place, but have we given any thought to what that might look like?
And that is a legal policy, by the way.
Yes, that's illegal.
So we are required, we're going to be...
That's correct. We really don't get a vote on this, other than we need to vote for it.
No, sir. No, sir. We did talk about dressing up that day as fruits and vegetables, I'm going to be the carrot, and Jeff Metter will be the peas, so we'll come as peas and carrots.
Can we sing Veggie Tales songs?
Yes, so, but we will be required to have instruction around that, so you want to speak to that?
I do, actually. I just, I look back, so our American reading is the, a big portion of the reading curriculum that we use, and looking ahead to the end of the school year, which is when this would fall, kindergarten is doing entomology, which is bugs, first grade is doing plants, second grade is doing community, so those all fall beautifully in line with community helpers. Third, fourth, and fifth, we have marine life, states, and civil war. We may have to get a little more creative in there, but I was thinking, we have Ag Day that we do at the campuses every year, so if we move that around a little bit. We also have community gardens already set up at some of the campuses, so we could revive those. And I was thinking, it really might be an awesome project for a senior project, for them to kind of put that in place, and do a farmer's market or something like that, but I think we've got some, I've already, my brain, since lunch, when we've been, we started talking about this today, but I've got some ideas on how we can really tie that in, and make it a natural thing, and not just a one more, one more thing to do. So, yeah, we'll make it happen.
Okay. Another question, again, in that same area, House Bill 3908 designates fentanyl poisoning awareness week, obviously a little more on the serious side of things. Here's the part, though, that says, "may include age-appropriate instruction." What age do we consider appropriate for that kind of discussion?
And have we done, we've already done, done some, well, we did the public service stuff for the one pill kills, and so, but, yep.
So, yeah, we've, we've got, Ms. Evans and I have some curriculum developed, we're going to get that hopefully approved, recommended from the Shack and then to the board. Right now, it's six through 12 is those grade levels that we have to instruct about fentanyl, so it's only secondary, so we won't do anything in elementary. We did do fentanyl awareness month, we sent out some social media posts, and we did some things within the district, but it wasn't, it wasn't actual curriculum just yet, but we're working on that, but it's six through 12.
Thank you.
Have you already attempted to have that passed through Shack, and why hasn't it passed?
We haven't had a quorum just yet, so we've had two meetings, and so we couldn't take any action, but we've got the curriculum, we've had it on a, an agenda, it's posted, and we've had a few parents reach out, not many, but just a few, just asking some questions about it, and so Ms. Evans and I took some time. We've also looked at some, one outside group, Recovery Council, and they've also proposed a curriculum, and they just do, kind of do a one and done day, and then they come back throughout the semester as well, so we're just looking at those options.
When is the next Shack committee?
We've, I've got a plan that, we'll have that sometime in the spring, so we'll meet two times in the spring for a total of four for the year.
And will we be doing something different than we have in the past to attempt to have a quorum present?
Going to try.
Just to confirm, that we'll move through a Shack committee?
Yes, they have to make the recommendation, what they want, and then we bring that to you guys for approval.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to adopt Tasby Policy Update Number 122 as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Krista. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. The time is now 7:50 PM, and the board will now move into closed session. Pursuant to the following sections, 551.072, which is discussion of or purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. 551.073, discussion of negotiated contracts for prospective gifts or donations. 551.074, discussion of officers, employees, and personnel matters.